You are being recorded, gentlemen.
Good evening. Call this special meeting of the Town and Thompson Planning and Zoning Commission to order. It is Thursday, March 4th, 2021 at 6:06 PM. We are meeting via Zoom. We will begin with a roll call. Mr. Lenke.
John B. Lenke, present.
Mr. Hill?
Alvin Hill, present.
Mr. Santos?
Brian Santos, present.
Mr. Popowski?
Dave Popowski, present.
Mr. Blackmer?
You're still on mute, Randy.
Can you hear us, Randy?
I can see him there. There he is.
Randy Blackmer, present.
And Joseph Perotti Brown, present. And we will seat Mr. Hill for Mr. Rice, Mr. Popowski for Mr. Wurge. Item two, review and discussion of.
Item one.
You have to, you have to seat Santos, too. He's also an alternate.
I'm sorry. We will sit, seat Mr. Santos for Mr. Nelson. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, Papa. Papa Chair.
Item, review and discussion of the planning, the plan of conservation and development. Um. I'm. I'm seeing now that on the agenda, this is not. Written as a public hearing.
That's problematic.
That is, in fact, problematic.
Let me go take a look at that agenda.
Mr. Chair, next Tuesday is definitely the, a meeting for, for the subdivisions, correct? March, uh, March 9th?
Yes, I believe that is the current plan.
Okay. Just, I just need to, I just want to double check because I have, I've been invited to be into another Zoom meeting that night.
Well, I just looked at that agenda and not that I didn't think Joe was correct, but I have confirmed with the evidence of my eyes that Joe is correct.
Yeah. My apologies for, for my, for not. For, yeah, my apologies for that not appearing correctly.
Well, none of us caught it. None of us who reviewed it caught it. So.
Tyra? It says, "Public Hearing," under Topic.
Does it? Go back and look. On the agenda, Topic, Public Hearing. I don't know. What do you guys think?
What, I, I don't, I don't, I'm sorry. I don't see what that.
Yeah. So if you look at the top where it says Agenda Special Meeting, and then it has the Zoom meeting, Tira Peng gets invited to a scheduled Zoom meeting. Topic, Public Hearing Adoption of P O C D.
Was it, was it, was it, excuse me on that one, Mr. Chairman, but was it? Was it published at any other place? I don't have my Thompson Villager. I thought it was in there.
It is.
In the Thompson Villager?
Mm-hmm.
This, this past Friday.
And the Friday before.
So it's been noticed, it's been noticed as a public hearing in the newspaper.
I'm pretty sure I.
Yes. I've got the, I've got the notice from the paper right here in my hand. And it says the Thompson, the Thompson Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March 4th, 2021 via Zoom at 6:00 PM.
There you go.
And it lists the application.
All right. So this is my suggestion, Mr. Chairman. I say we just proceed. We're all here. Ken is the only member of the public who has dialed in and you can, you know, invite him to speak under the public hearing. And we'll proceed as if it's normal. I will run it by Roberts. And if he agrees that the legal notice in the paper and the fact that the words Topic, Public Hearing appear on the agenda is kosher, then we can consider it resolved. If it is not resolved, we can add the public hearing to the beginning of the subdivision regulations. Just hold it open for a half hour. I think that's the way to solve it. We only lose a few days.
Yeah.
What do you think?
So we would have to. We would, we would have to, would we have to?
I think you still have to open the public hearing.
Uh-huh.
Formally, and formally close the public hearing.
Right.
And then vote.
Do we get into trouble then trying to do that on Tuesday? If we have to?
I don't think so. I think the solution is either this is, either this satisfies the, the purposes and is legal, or it is not. This becomes void and you just, you take the vote again.
But then don't we have, I mean, when we have to then renotice and re?
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's a good point. Sons are reverber.
So I think you're, I think the first step of your plan is the way to go.
Yeah, it's the noticing. Yeah, it's the noticing. That's the problem.
Yeah.
If, Mr. Chair, I read it. Like I said, I look into the Thompson Villager all the time to see what stuff is being published. And I, I do remember that being there. So, you know, for this, this, for tonight.
Sounds like it has a good chance of being okay.
And I think it was, I think it, it should have been published on the website, too. The town website.
It was.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to, no, I'm sorry. See, now I'm all.
We're all confused.
Open it up.
Uh, yeah. So I would like to open the public hearing on the planning, the Town of Thompson Plan of Conservation and Development. We do have an application number. Let me pull that up.
Twenty-one oh three.
Thank you. Twenty-one dash zero three, applicant, the Town of Thompson Planning and Zoning Commission. Any comments from the public on the Town of Thompson Plan of Conservation and Development 2020 as published on the town's website?
Just one comment. It's, it's a.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, Ken Boselley, 21 Walker Drive.
Thank you.
Uh, no, it's a great document. It's updated very well. Uh, there's a lot of things that we've already accomplished on it, which is a great thing. Uh, there's a lot of, it's been, uh. There's a lot of things that hopefully over the next 10 years, we can accomplish and keep going in the positive direction that we're going in. The, the, the only thing that I did see in it, because the document is basically the, you know, the pros and cons and what the challenges are and the solutions to those items in the various throughout the P O C D. One of the things that I did see and to be, just like we've done with it, EDC, housing, infrastructure, you point out the issues, you try and put a plan in place and what you want to accomplish over those 10 years. The only thing that I did see that was missing from that document was on the education side. And I'm not, I'll tell you right now, I'm not picking on the school. I'm not picking on anything. I'm looking at it strictly as what we need to do with this town in the next 10 years going forward. And one of the biggest things that I did see that was omitted from there, we became an alliance district. And that means that we're underperforming. So that's a con, and the pro would be to get out from being a, you know, the alliance district and bring everything up. And that should be in there, just like any other department, whether it's recreation, infrastructure, EDC, you know, what, tax, whatever it is, that should be included in the P O C D. Because it is a need, it's something that we need to correct. And, you know, you point that out and we work towards the goal of correcting all of these challenges that we have throughout the P O C D.
Thank you, Mr. Boselley.
So what do you think about the rest of the, you want to just sort of see if anybody else dials in, Joe, and then close the public hearing and have whatever other discussion you want?
Yeah, I'm looking at it's six seventeen now. You know, because we got started a little bit late. Six eighteen now. If you all don't mind, I'll keep waiting for two more minutes. I think if we give you twenty minutes, that's, that's a sufficient expectation.
Your call, Chair.
Yeah, but I like to be a consensus builder, Mr. Lenke.
And since we have a couple of minutes, can I just respond to Ken? Is that okay? Since we're just kind of. Talking here or no?
I, I think I would prefer for that after the, after the hearing.
Yeah, all right. I'll follow procedure. Sorry.
No need to apologize.
Hey, you're getting.
This is like the P and Z A team.
It's very kind of you to say.
Hey, Brian, you're getting to look like Sam DeSham of the Pharaohs with, with your look.
Oh, John, I just want to make a general comment. Every time I've gotten on this call with you, you've had some sort of comment from me on the past couple of meetings.
I like picking on you.
I don't know if anyone else has noticed that.
I gotta have some fun, dude.
I'm, I'm trying to have some eggs and pancakes before I have my all nighter here.
I'm coming right over.
Yeah.
I think Gloria's gonna, Gloria's gonna cover this with the commissioners enjoy, engage in some playful banter.
Better occupy the time with something. Come on, guys. You can pick on me all you want, Brian. I can take it.
I know you can. I know you can, sir.
If I, if I, if I can hang around with Jeff. Who was a good friend of mine, God rest his soul. I put up with a lot of crap from him.
Oh, I have no doubt.
I've got six twenty. So I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
I'll motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Mr. Santos and seconded by Mr. Lenke to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, a yes will close the hearing, a no will keep it open. Mr. Lenke?
John, uh, J, uh, John B. Lenke, yes.
Mr. Hill?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. What'd you say? Yes to close it? No, not? Right? Okay, yes.
That's correct. A yes closes the hearing.
Thank you. I had to think twice on that.
Mr. Hill?
Alvin Hill, yes.
Mr. Popowski?
Dave Popowski, yes.
Mr. Santos?
And Santos, yes.
Mr. Blackmer?
Randy Blackmer, yes.
Joseph Perotti Brown, yes. The public hearing is closed. Item. Three, discuss the plan of conservation and development and possible action. Mr. Santos?
Thank you very much. I, so, Ken, I just wanted to ask you more directly, involving the school, just for future planning. Are we talking about the, hold on one second? Like, the things we've talked about in the past, like development of solar, maybe just upgrades to the school. I just wanted to be a little bit more specific because I, I know that the building committee gets involved in things as, well, because I'm on the building committee. But I just wanted to understand a little bit more detail of what you were kind of getting at with education.
Well, what, the, the mission of the school is to educate our children. And they put out, if you read that, they put out a very, you know, what their mission statement is, they, you know, to educate the kids and, you know, to provide, because that's their mission, to provide an education. It has nothing to do with the facility or anything of that nature. As you know, Brian, being on P and Z and EDC and the branding committee, having a strong education system is part of attracting business, attracting people to come into the town.
Yep.
You know that as well as I do, because we've been striving towards that.
Okay, so general education is supportive of the education means and.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, you know, the school board mission is to do X, Y, and Z, you know, to provide. And, you know, they lay it out very well, except the, the con that is there. And that is when we became an alliance district. And the idea would be to overcome that and get out from being, which strengthens the credibility, you know, of our school. And we're back up to standards. And that's it. I mean, that's the same thing with the, you know, and I don't have the P C D open in front of me, but that's even looking at, you know, what the branding committee is doing when we put that all together.
Yeah.
We looked at variations of the town, what the pros and the cons were and how, you know, what do we need to overcome and get, you know, to the ultimate goal. That's all.
I'll keep that in mind for, you know, what we're doing with the meeting last night that you attended in the development, that promotional thing. So I'll keep that in mind as we move forward with that. Hopefully move forward with that document. I think it was a good note that you had tonight. So thank you.
I just want to clarify to Ken's point. He did raise that when we had that additional comment period that we ended up opening for, for the P Z C and the Board of Selectmen. When we discovered our original timeframe to approve in December wasn't going to be effective. So Ken had sent that comment to me and I did go back to Melinda in this case, rather than through the Board of Ed. And I said, look, you know, this is a concern. You know, and I agree with it. You know, you don't have to necessarily lay out all your dirty laundry on the lawn, on the lawn, but, you know, to acknowledge your challenges and how it fits in the context. So there is a little bit of content that was added, which is the draft that's online. That was the draft that got published. And it's in the challenges, the, the challenges to the education subsection in that chapter. Although it does also sort of. Show that one of the responses to that was the development of the separate career tracks. So it, it did give it a little context, but Ken is certainly correct that the status as an alliance district is not emphasized in the section on education.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Lenke?
So what's being said is, is we need to figure out how we can. Put this into the document. So we have something to work with going forward for the next 10 years to try to help, whatever it's going to take through the EDC, the branding and whatnot, to get our education system back up where it was back after, before nineteen sixty-nine, the last good year of Turtle Lot.
Let me guess, that's when you graduated.
What can I say? But we do need to get it back up. My, my son went to school in town in, at Turtle Lot. I call it Turtle Lot. And, you know, at our town, at one time, I, from. Like I said, I grew up here, born and raised, grew up here and everything. And, and we had a very good school system. Thompson or Turtle Lot was well-known because, one, because well, because the athletic program was good. But we also had very, had students that graduated and went on to some outstanding schools that I remember. And, and, and we weren't in any alliance district, you know? I mean, we basically, this town did it on their own. But, you know, we need to get back to that now. You know, you know, we got to stop dilling around here somehow and figure out what it's going to really take. I'd like to see it back. My son's education wasn't the greatest from Turtle Lot. I think he would have been better off to go to Marionapolis, but I couldn't. I wasn't going to argue over that.
I'm sure Dr. Perotti Brown appreciates the endorsement of his employer.
You, you look at, you look at the students that, that, a lot of, a lot of the parents, and even in Thompson, back in my time, some, a lot of, there were a lot of kids that went to Marionapolis or Putnam Catholic Academy, or, you know, because of the education, not just the, of the athletic side, but the educational side was, was, they were there. And like, it just changed. You could see it over the time, you know? So. I, that's my concern. I agree with Kenny with, but how are we going to do it? How are we going to do the verbiage? Whatever we need to do to get this thing moving forward, you know? It, it, I want to see my, my town, my school get better. I like to see the basketball program a little bit more. How much do we have in the last maybe ten, fifteen years? And maybe Brian can jump in on this because he's, he's got, you know, two of his children going there and everything. And his mother-in-law was a school teacher and all that stuff. The, the programs, you know, were they sufficient enough to help the kids, you know, and stuff like that? So I'm, I'm support, I'll support it one way or the other.
I just, I just compared the language, again, more, more side by side, the language from the draft that we saw in December and the final draft as posted and, and did see, you know, that, that it does bring in the fact that, you know, I was concerned, even the way Tira was describing it, I was concerned that there was no mention of, of the district being an alliance district, but that is explicitly mentioned. And it talks a little bit about the funding challenges as well that Thompson faces relative to other alliance districts. So I thought, I thought that was a substantive addition.
We got, we got, we got, we have you, Mr. Chair. You know, you're the teacher and everything. That's your expertise. But, you know, what's it going to take for us to get this town moving forward? You know, I mean, to attract families in, you know, I mean, to, you know, to bring. Kids, more kids in, you know? That's what we need. We can't. What is the, what is the total population of, of the school, of all the kids in our school, in a, in a high school and, or, or the middle school or junior high back in my day?
Nine hundred and change across all three schools.
I remember at one time, I think the most, the most we had. The most we had was, I think we were considered, if we, if we had fifteen or sixteen hundred at one time total. I mean, we were good, but we had a bunch of good. You know, kids academic-wise as well as athletic-wise come out in those years.
So what I would suggest, and, you know, this doesn't particularly have to do with the possible action and, and vote to adopt, but, you know, since we're here talking about it on a little extra time this evening, you know, what I would suggest with the document in general. Is that the arguments that are advanced to support the, the various concepts. So let's, you know, stick with education here. So one of the things that comes up constantly, and I find it an incredibly frustrating debate point that gets used, is that adding families and adding kids is going to somehow detract from or degrade the school. Except that. When you're under, when you're, when you're so vastly. Under capacity, right? Your amortization of cost per student actually looks really, really terrible. And while the relationship is not one-to-one, because there are things that skew it for special education and things like that. In general, as you reach the capacity that a facility is designed for, the, the per-student costs must go down. So all those arguments that people make, like, oh my God, it costs eighteen thousand dollars a student. We can't have more of them. Actually, if you have more of them, the math works more favorably. So it gets less sticker shocking. But also the more kids you have and the more vibrance you have in a program, the more you're able to offer them later, right? It justifies enriching curriculum. You know, nobody's going to start a new class to serve two kids in a class, right? But if you get enough critical mass of classes to justify adding something to the curriculum, you know, you improve the conditions. Now, there is a point at which you get too many, for sure. And then you get that, you know, overcrowding of classrooms and, and you have to start adding layers of costs to accommodate. Thompson is nowhere near that. You know, if John is saying that there was at one time sixteen hundred students in the high school, there's not even five hundred now. So, you know, that is a disparity of what is available to be offered and who we're offering it to.
Tira, I just want to correct you on that. That would then between the junior high and high school.
Okay.
You know, that would have been, that was considered six, seven, and eight. And then, you know, freshman and right up to senior year. So between then, and, and you all, and I remember. That we had at least twenty-five kids per class, you know? I mean, even though we were rotating around, you know, at the time, you know, but, you know, you always had twenty-five, at least twenty-five students to a class, you know, except certain, if you didn't want to take French or, or what, Spanish, whatever, well, guess what? It was less. But.
If you didn't want to take any of the courses that Joe would teach?
I was just going to say, okay, no.
Well, sorry, Joe, but that wasn't my interest. I was more interested in cars and stuff, playing basketball and baseball. But, I mean, but you figure on an average, in, 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 in anybody that tried out for the, for any of the sports, there was always a sufficient amount of, you know, of kids that were trying out for basketball, baseball, or soccer, or whatever, you know? They, they had a good pool from. But that dwindled down over the years. And when something starts dwindling down and you can't recoup it for whatever reason, here we go. You know, our educational system is suffering.
I, I think about two words as you guys are talking. I think I'll remember these two words when we're, again, hopefully doing that promotional thing, but options lead to opportunities, right? Those are the two words that I think about. Because my brain can't think outside of two words, right? So. If you provide options for students, meaning educational pass, extracurricular activities, like a nice track, or options for local sports and recreation and things like that, they bleed into opportunities to go to better schools. Or if we have a better business sense in town and actually promote business and have an agricultural center where people can go learn, that is an opportunity, right?
Michael.
So those are the two words that I think about. And I, I think that they could be part of the P O C D or this other marketing plan that we're putting together, hopefully.
Well, I, I think you will find that all of those things are in the P O C.
Yeah.
And the kitchen sink.
Yep.
But how can we implement it to make it?
Well, it takes groups like this and keep on pressing certain agenda, John, in my opinion, right? And you need to be spirited about it.
Your.
Right. So the P O, the P O C D is the guidebook. And then the implementation and the planning is what you guys will do theoretically, based on the concept. theoretically, based on the concepts that are adopted. And that's the, that's the purpose of the document. You know, and there are action items proposed, but the specific strategies, that's what comes out of the commission work and the, and the work of the elected officials and the work of the staff. The P O C D exists to illustrate concepts and philosophies. So that's what you adopt. Or, well, or not adopt, but let's assume that you're going to adopt it, please.
Mr. Linking.
For my sake.
Mike Krobel just stepped in about two minutes ago.
Thank you, Mr. Linking.
Hello, folks.
Welcome, Mr. Krobel.
Thank you, thank you.
Record will indicate Mr. Krobel's presence. Great, so. So, so to my way of thinking, we, we received the draft in December. As far as I understand, and the planner, the director of planning can correct me if I'm wrong, the only substantive change that's made, that's been made was a response from, you know, was in response to Mr. Bosley's comments, adding more context about the school's status as an alliance district. We can even pull that up, Tira, if.
Yeah, and it's not, by the way, it's not the only change that was subject, the, 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 that was suggested and incorporated. Suzanne did also send me some comments, some slight adjustments to the section on the building committee. And she did actually call out that I entirely missed discussing emergency services in, the ambulance service in the emergency services section. So we can take them in order and I'll pull them up. What did we say? I want to say, I think this is where the change is to the building committee stuff. Yep, so there are some changes in this paragraph on page twenty-five. I think the pagination is probably the same to the older draft. So the, the change is the building committee is made up of eight appointed volunteer members overseeing major capital projects in Thompson at the request of the Board of Selectmen. That is the, the same. The committee is not a permanent standing body, rather it is periodically constituted by the Board of Selectmen to oversee specific projects. A side effect of this structure is that the building committee is by its nature a managing body rather than a planning body. And no single long-term master plan for projects under the committee has been developed. It is recommended that the Board of Selectmen either restructure the building committee as a permanent committee, expanding its mandate to include long-range planning, or constitute a separate volunteer advisory committee to develop a long-range, ten-year plan for major municipal capital projects. It is also recommended that the resulting ten-year plan be published on the town website. So that's a very slight amendment, but it does reflect the fact that technically the building committee is not a standing committee, that it is constituted to oversee specific projects and adjust it accordingly. So again, pretty minor, but more factually correct. So that was an appropriate call out. And then the other one was in section five, well, let me go back to the table of contents and do it that way.
Thirty-four, thirty-five, somewhere around there.
Yeah. So the, the lead in to that is all the same, but again, a second thing that Suzanne had pointed out was that it says right in the header, fire and EMS, and all I talked about was fire. I kind of forgot about EMS. I did get in touch with the gentleman who is the, the lead on that, Joshua, I can't remember his last name. And we had a little conversation as I was working up the, the final draft to post. So on page thirty-six, there is an added paragraph, so this is entirely new and has no analog in the, in the December draft. Thompson's ambulance and emergency medical services are operated out of the community fire station. Unlike the firefighters, emergency medical responders are a paid professional organization. The relationship between the fire station and the ambulance services has existed in this arrangement for many years, but it does create additional challenges for both organizations. As has been previously noted, the condition of the station house itself is substandard for its purpose and it is too small to properly house both services. Over the years, the possibility of uncoupling the ambulance from community fire has been raised, but the ambulance corps lacks the capital that would be legally required for them to relocate to a standalone facility. Further compounding this obstacle is the very nature of the income structure for ambulance service providers. Income from direct billing for services makes up roughly sixty percent of the corps' costs. Of the remainder, roughly thirty percent is provided by the town and another ten percent is drawn from private donations or fee-for-service detail work, e.g. staffing large public events. Insurance reimbursements typically cover slightly less than half of the charges incurred on a medical emergency call and the corps is limited in its legal ability to pursue arrears from those on public insurance. In short, Thompson's emergency medical service providers stand as another example of dedicated employees providing an essential public service on a shoestring budget. In the pursuit of more efficient funding structures for the volunteer fire departments, it is further recommended that attention be given to potential strategies to uncouple the ambulance corps from community fire in a manner beneficial to both organizations and the town. So not a lot there and nothing that I could really hang an action item on, partly because of how late in the process I got it. But it is just a larger challenge that I couldn't really posit an action solution for, other than, you know, let's look at it and try to figure it out. So I didn't add any specific action item to it later in the section. But that was an addition. And then the third again, and I'll go get the jump to the education section. And that is in this last paragraph on page one twenty-one is where the additional information about the alliance districts was added. A challenge implied in the student data cited in section fourteen point two is the retention of students in the transition from middle school to high school. Thompson Public Schools was designated one of thirty-three alliance districts in December twenty seventeen due to low student achievement outcomes on state assessments. During the fiscal year seventeen, eighteen and nineteen twenty, school years, funds were awarded to help support a district-wide improvement plan. To date, that funding has allowed the district to add reading specialists, purchase laptops for all students and fund professional development activities for faculty and staff. Due to legislative language in the alliance regulations, Thompson does not receive an annual grant allocation like the other alliance school systems. The members of the B O E and our local state representatives continue to advocate for equitable funding for Thompson schools. Despite the acknowledged challenges, TMHS has several outstanding programs that have been developed to meet the particular needs of the town students and then it proceeds with the career pathways. So those were the three content changes, you know, not edits or something was formatted wonky kind of thing. And that was all that came out of that extra period during the month of January. No public comments of any kind were received after the, the locked draft. This draft was published on the website, which I didn't expect. It's not a regulatory document, it's a guidance document. Probably most people are unaware that it exists or its purpose, but we are required to have one. So, you know, I think, for whatever it's worth, I, I happen to think it's a really good, it's a really good P O C D. It's really thorough. When you compare it to the one that was published ten years ago, you know, forty, fifty pages of very bare bones information. I think it gives a lot more substance for all of the town departments and commissions and offices to work with, should they choose to. Nobody can force any commission or department or individual to use these guidelines, but they are there. And since we had thirty people working on it who are involved as volunteers or staff or elected officials, I think that sets up a good platform to incorporate the concepts. You know, we're not going to hit all of them, but as many as we can. I feel confident that this commission will keep those principles in mind.
Well, thank you for, for walking us through those three sections, Tira. Any other thoughts, comments, questions from the commissioners?
What do we need to do to, are we okay with what we feel we got? Or you think we can make a little bit more improvement on it, Mr. Chair?
I, I think it's, it's ready to go. And it's a document I'm pleased with. I would be.
A motion to adopt. I don't know if we put a timeline on that. Like, when is the adoption date?
I think once you vote to adopt, as long as this meeting is, is confirmed to have adhered to the legal standard after the slight discrepancy in the way the agenda was posted, then yeah, that, that's the, that's the public record and I'll turn around and upload it to the state websites and, and go through that process.
I'll, I'll motion immediately adopt.
I would second that, Joe, Brian.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the plan of conservation development as posted in its final draft on the Town of Thompson website. Any discussion on the motion?
Is that dependent on Rich's, okay, that the, the notice is okay?
Yeah, I think Randy, whether or not I think that's in the motion, I think if the lawyer tells us it's not okay, then we're.
We're done. Yeah.
Well, I didn't know whether just putting pending Rich's stamp of approval needed to be in Brian's motion.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it needs to be in the motion. I think if we were.
I'll accept the way you worded it after.
Yeah, I think if we were waiting for his opinion on the legality of, of some of the content of it, I, I think we should include that in the language, but we're either legally adopting this or we aren't, is I think what it comes down to. But thank you for raising the point, Randy.
And I, and I will send that over, that question over to Rich first thing tomorrow. Because I really don't want to come back in another thirty-four days.
Agreed. Any other further discussion? I would just add, because after this vote, our next agenda item is, occurs rather quickly. I just want to say that I think one of the most important pages of the planning, the plan of conservation development is page six, and I would like to express my gratitude to those, those people who are acknowledged in the document for all their work on it. Some of here who are here, some of whom are here in this meeting, many of whom are not. It truly was a collaborative effort and I am grateful to those who participated. Hearing no further discussion, it will be a yes to approve the plan of conservation and development as published to the town website, a no to reject its approval. Mr. Linking.
John B. Linky, yes.
Mr. Krobel.
Mike Krobel, yes.
Mr. Hill.
Alvin Hill, yes.
Mr. Poplowski.
Dave Poplowski, yes.
Mr. Blackmore.
Randy Blackmore, yes.
Mr. Santos.
Ryan Santos, yes.
Joseph Perotti Brown, yes. The plan of conservation and development is voted to be adopted.
With an effective date of?
With an effective date of March fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Thank you, Director. Item four, adjournment. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make it.
Motion made by Mr. Linking, seconded by Mr. Blackmore. This meeting is adjourned at six fifty-one P M. Thank you all very much. Have a great night.
Good night.
Thanks, guys. See you guys Tuesday.
Have a good one, everybody.
Bye-bye.